Under this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission, Michael Ann, we have roll call, please.
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight to the meeting. Next room, this meeting will be Tuesday, June 11. Uh, we've got a few proclamations. We're gonna do one for representative. Permission, if there is any that would like to say something, I'd let you take the floor.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank you for coming, but I remember back when I was considering running for the commission and I didn't see him again for... He was at the dorm. We talked. We've met several times at different locations. He has never not come to meet us down there. He even came off of the floor to talk to the delegation from... I mean, not commissioner, but a true representative of the people, and I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
You not only have a nice-looking family, but... Yes, I told Mr. Berry earlier today that a lot of the good that's been happening in this... Thank you. Done for everybody.
I can just add, we're fairly new to the administration. So collectively, this representation of Raton represents a large area of, you know, a good part of this northeast corner of the state, so there's a lot of diverse interests there, there's a lot of territory to cover. Representative Roche is driven from Logan with the family and representative, I hope you introduce your family to us, but that's a long trip and he tells me that he's gonna have to be at work tomorrow and he's a working man also, and so unfortunately, he's gonna have to turn around and drive back, but that's a long drive for representative and the kids to attend our meeting tonight, and so I think that's the kind of dedication that we've had, and I don't know that we're gonna duplicate that, hopefully we get close, but thank you for your dedication and hard work. It's a much more demanding position than you can imagine.
Absolutely.
A lot of representatives are a lot closer to Santa Fe, represent a population but a smaller area. This is a real challenge that Representative Roche has met to the highest standards in the last 10 years.
Absolutely, and Representative Roche, I would echo everyone's sentiments. I've brought a group of crazy seniors down there on numerous occasions, and you've managed to squeeze them all into your office, and not only that, you've listened to them when they've asked questions, so appreciate that. So let's get this show on the road here, shall we? Got a proclamation for you. Proclamation, Dennis J. Roche Day in Raton, New Mexico, July 10th, 2018. Whereas Dennis J. Roche has served for 10 years in the New Mexico House of Representatives as a dedicated and effective legislator representing District 67, and whereas during that time, Representative Roche has balanced the demands of service to the public in the legislature with family life and professional responsibilities, and whereas Representative Roche has served Raton, Colfax County, and northeastern New Mexico as a strong advocate for education, health issues, effective government, economic development, and individual responsibility, and whereas as a result of the efforts of Representative Roche, critical infrastructure improvements, including street and drainage improvements and public works equipment replacement, have been funded through capital appropriations, and whereas Representative Roche has sponsored legislation and supported the city of Raton on important matters relating to tax issues and municipal elections, and whereas after serving five terms, Representative Dennis J. Roche is retiring from the New Mexico Legislature at the end of the 2018-2019 session. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata, mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, on behalf of the city of Raton and the Raton City Commission declares July 10th, 2018 as Dennis J. Roche Day in Raton, New Mexico, and recognizes and thanks Dennis J. Roche for his dedication and service to the community of Raton, and witness whereof I have hereto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 10th day of July, 2018. (applause) We have a proclamation for you, and we also would like to present you the keys.
Oh, my goodness. I'll try this after hours, see if you can... No, 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 no. This is great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. You know, I was thinking about, on my way up here, I was like, you know, 10 years just goes like that. In fact, my wife and I, this is my wife Rochelle, we were married in June of 2008, 2008, and I was elected to the legislature just over six months later. So basically, our whole family has known nothing but this, and of course, now four kids later, we have Bethany, who just turned seven on the 4th of July, she's a firecracker.
All right.
And Addison, who will be turning six next month in August. Brayden is three and a half, will be four in December, and this is Juliette, the newest and final addition. And she will be one in November, November 11th, so...
Very nice.
Thinking about how fast things have gone, the proclamation included several of the things that I worked hard on for Raton, and you mentioned some of the capital things. A lot of what I've come to realize about the legislator's role, and I know you're seeing it in the commissioner's role, is relationships. That's where the power is. The power is not in a title, it's not in a gavel, it's in relationships, and so, you know, Scott gives me some packet of information about some deficiencies or potential deficiencies at Lake Malloy Dam. I have the ability, where I was, to make connections and get him and his team connected with the staff of the State Engineers Office. It's those relationships. I've got the cell number in my phone, and I can just, "Let's get together." Or, you know, we have the DOS aviation deal where the mayor and I got a chance to drive together up to Pueblo after meeting with the lieutenant governor and the National Guard folks. Those relationships are really what's key. When former hospital administrator Sean Lurch called and said, "Hey, the funding proposal for this year's budget is trying to tap funds that are reserved for the Miners Colfax Medical Center," I used my relationships with members of the appropriations committee and some of the staff to get that taken right back out and kept those funds in place. It's all about relationships. You guys get that, and it's really been my honor to get to know you as a public official, but as a friend, and I consider each of you a friend, and it's been my honor to serve, and thank you for letting me go spend more time with my family. My oldest, Bethany, said, "Daddy, you gotta be in Santa Fe again, you missed my spelling bee." And I said, "That was sort of the first mark that we gotta put our priorities right, family comes first." Now, when they get to be teenagers, they don't want me at the house, maybe I'll go back. But until then, I'm gonna stand with you from Logan with my family, so thank you so much for this honor, and really, I am very honored by this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. And we appreciate you coming up and spending time with us, and we're not gonna make you stay through the rest of this meeting because you know how meetings are.
You know that. It's been a pretty good game for now.
They've been great.
Thank you.
They've been great.
And I'm still your representative till December 31st, so if I can help, you call, and we'll get you some help.
We will. We will. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Appreciate it. Okay, so next up, then, we have a proclamation for the fireworks display, Raton Fire and Emergency Services. Mr. Chavez has that, I believe.
Do they show up?
They are out there, yes. Somewhere.
Proclamation, Raton Fire and Emergency Services, July 4th, the fireworks display. Whereas Independence Day is one of the most important holidays the United States of America celebrates, and whereas we historically celebrate this holiday with much fanfare and firework displays throughout our nation, and whereas the city of Raton's own spectacular display of fireworks was truly awe-inspiring in 2018, thanks to the donations by residents' lodgers' tax funding, and whereas the firework display would not have been possible without the dedication and hard work of Raton's Fire and Emergency Services personnel, who unselfishly gave the enormous amount of time and energy to this annual event for Raton's enjoyment. So therefore, does James Neil Sagata Jr., the mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, on behalf of the city of Raton, does hereby thank Chief Chris Espinoza and his personnel for making July 4th, 2018, a most remarkable and memorable event, and witness thereof, he has hereto set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 10th day of July, 2018.
I'm gonna squeeze a bit between the two big eyes. Thank you.
Good job, guys, it was a great show. Very good.
Thank you.
They did. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could just also say, you know, our state, our appreciation to the public, public donations have funded more than one-third of the rather significant cost of the show, and we look forward to, you know, continuing the tradition and doing it bigger and better next year, but I think it's something that Raton is known for to people, you know, far out of Raton, so it's definitely a tradition we wanna keep going, but it only comes off because of the professional work of these gentlemen here.
Absolutely. Great job.
And this year was exceptional, we actually, there was not a fireworks show between Denver and Albuquerque, I would say, so we were getting a lot of phone calls from Colorado. Colorado Springs Chamber actually called us and asked us if we were having some, some lady says she was gonna bring her camper and come camping down here.
Right on.
Good job.
I did see a lot of Colorado plates at the show. Great job, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have a proclamation, 2018, 4th of July events, Raton Main Street and Balloon Rally. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay. Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee, 4th of July events and international balloon rally. Whereas Raton Main Street is a community-based voluntary organization dedicated to enhancing and enriching the life of the community, as well as making Raton a desirable destination, and whereas by these efforts, Raton Main Street has organized dozens of successful events throughout the year in Raton that are very beneficial to the community and the city, and whereas people come from all around the state, other states, and even other countries to attend these many events, and whereas Raton Main Street has organized the 4th of July events in the city of Raton for six years, including fun on historic First Street and a parade, and whereas Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee have organized a very successful and highly anticipated international balloon rally for the past six years, and whereas the hard work and dedication of the individuals on these boards is an esteemed asset to the community and the city, and whereas their efforts and tireless hours of work have enriched our community and brought others to see how beautiful and fun our community is, and whereas the city of Raton would like to extend its appreciation to the Raton Main Street and Raton Balloon Rally Committees, now therefore, does James Neil Sagata Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, on behalf of the city of Raton, does hereby thank Raton Main Street and the Raton Balloon Rally Committee for organizing the most remarkable and memorable events, and witness whereof, he has hereto set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 10th day of July, 2018. (applause) Thank you, guys.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Unlike Dennis Roche, you guys have to stay for the entire meeting.
Again, we'd like to express our thanks to you guys for the hard work that you do. I thought it was a pretty awesome day, all in all, parade, balloon rally, everything, so appreciate it.
You're welcome, it was awesome, thank you.
You bet.
It was a good turnout.
It was. All right, at this time, we'll take any comments from the general public. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. You don't have to run out. All righty, see, and then we'll move on to the business portion of the meeting. Item 6A, approval of the June 26, 2018, regular commission meeting minutes. In your packet, if y'all had a chance to read them?
Mayor Sagata, I went over it, and I couldn't find anything. Did anybody else find anything? I recommend approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on bid award for street and infrastructure maintenance contract. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, the city of Raton had asked for bids for work that we do on an ongoing basis consisting of maintenance, basically, and it's primary street replacement that we're talking about, or really any kind of infrastructure maintenance or replacement, but this would not constitute a capital improvement project. A capital improvement project would be bid out on its own merit, but we would look at, for example, we offer a 50-50 cost-sharing arrangement with property owners if they wanna move to the top of the priority list and they have something in the right-of-way sidewalk, curb and gutter, or something like that, we offer really that immediate gratification there with a 50-50 cost-sharing program, and the agreement that we have here is how we accomplish that throughout the year. Because we had a contractor basically retire in Raton, it's been a while since we had this contract in place, and we do have a little work that we'd like to accomplish, so we put that out for bid. We did receive the one bid that you have in your packet. The prices there are slightly higher than what we've seen in the past, but our recommendation is to award a contract to this, for the maintenance work, so we have that in place as the need arises. And I can answer any questions that you might have on that.
I don't see the bid. Is it in the back?
It was in the...
Oh, it was on the desk. Okay.
Might be on the...
Probably was, yep. There it was, my bad. I put it away with everything else.
So, let me give you a little more information on that. Firm name is Ace J. Moseman, it's a local firm that has held the contract previously several years before. The quantities are, estimate the quantities of what we might need throughout the year, it's really that unit price that is important, the thing that we're looking at. So you have a total amount there, in this case, it's $108,300, but what, the work that actually gets done will depend on that demand for it through the year and things that come up. So as I stated, we put the total amount on there for comparison of different bids, in this case, we really only have the one bid, but it's that unit price that's the important thing really to us.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Berry?
No.
Want to entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve that. Bid, award the bid to Ace J. Moseman for street improvements and infrastructure maintenance contract.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid to Ace J. Moseman for the said contract. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed? Carries, thank you. Item C, public hearing, ordinance, repealing ordinance number 666, the 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax effective January 1, 2019. Mr. Berry.
A little background on this, mayor, this ordinance has been in place since 1982, and it implemented the 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax. We've talked about that a lot over the past several months. What effectively is being proposed is that ordinance would be repealed, the 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax would be sunsetted, retired, gone, effective January 1 of 2019. As you remember, the, on the election ballot in March, the public did approve replacement of that with a 3/4% increment, so the 1% would go away. The action here is that of action on an ordinance, so it would require a public hearing, and then the commission under the next item would be set up to deliberate and act on this proposal to repeal ordinance 666.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments for Mr. Berry? This is a public hearing session, portion of the meeting. See no comments. I would then move on to item D, deliberate and act on ordinance number 998, repealing the ordinance, ordinance number 666, 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts, boy, tax effective January 1, 2019. Mr. Berry? You pretty much laid it out right there.
Mayor, I think you have our recommendation to, to approve this repeal of ordinance 666, and if we have some procedural questions on the ordinance, I could turn to Michael Ann, and if I'm missing any details, Michael Ann, please add to that conversation, but it's a relatively simple action here that's proposed.
As far as the procedure and the timeline, this action this evening, we will publish a notice of adoption in next week's Werf in the World Journal. We will also include the notice of publication for the tax that was voted on by the public in March, so those will both be published at the same time so that there will be less confusion. We've had quite a few questions, if our tax rate went up July 1st, which it did not, it's still the 8.520, but then January 1, this tax would be repealed, and then the 3/4% would go into effect, so it would be a 1/4% tax reduction effective January 1.
Okay.
And then I'll send, on this repeal, we send everything to New Mexico Tax and Revenue before September 30th, and then they'll publish the new tax rates that go out to all of the businesses probably in late November.
Okay. I think that's actually all right, Ron.
Is it?
There are no questions, all food. Make motion approved, ordinance number 998, repealing ordinance number 666, 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax effective January 1, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 998, which is repealing a supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax. Is there any other discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. All righty. Item E, deliberate and act on resolution 2018-45, NMDOT Aviation Division application for 2018-2019 consumables grant. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, New Mexico Aviation Division, that's a division of Department of Transportation, it will have an annual process of applying for a consumables grant in order to bring this financial benefit to a general aviation airport. You can see that in this resolution, city of Raton is requesting $10,000, and it is the way of an application for a consumables grant, and you certify by your approval here that you would budget 10% of matching funds for that. A consumable item in regard to an airport could be like a lighting bulb, something that has a limited life and you would replace during the year, or electrical component, something like that, that's related to the ongoing operation of the airport. So this is something that we do annually have done, longstanding period, and we would again be applying.
All right. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-45, New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division application for 2018-19 consumables grant.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-45. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item F, public hearing, city of Raton Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, this is an important item that we talk about annually at this time of year, our infrastructure capital improvement plan. We ask for public input as far as determining priorities and what is most important to the community as far as our infrastructure capital improvements going forward. We generally would plan for five years out. This is an annual process where we ask the public for their input, we get input from department heads, certainly we'll talk about this over the next several months at a number of commission meetings, and ultimately, the commission will adopt an ICIP, the capital improvement plan, for the upcoming period of fiscal year 2019 through 2023. Now, what we're doing is we're backing into a submission date of September 4th, 2018, that's when we would have to have our ICIP submitted to the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration. So we have some time to work on this. The public input part is important. Again, as we typically say, somebody interested out there can give us their input on this plan by attending a meeting and addressing the commission, they can write a letter, they can email, they can call us on the phone. We'll take any form of input that somebody out there that has some input into how this should be prioritized, however they wanna give us that input, and we'll report that to the commission. So we will talk about this at upcoming meetings between now, and we would plan on wrapping this up at the last August meeting so that we can make this submission as required in DFA. This is very important as far as requests for capital outlay in the upcoming legislative session. Their, the state is actually having a good year as far as their revenue side, I think that we can expect the capital outlay will be funded there. This is an important time where we determine what our priorities are. In front of you, Mayor Commission, you do see the last year's ICIP, you can see what we've listed as priorities. It's a lengthy list, it's several pages long, and typically, we would focus on this top five or top 10. If you see an item that's back there on page... funding mechanisms, but as far as going to the legislature and requesting capital outlay, they're really looking at your highest priorities. That's going to be items in the top five. So I'll just make a real quick summary of that, and then we'll go on to the public comment. But street improvements and street reconstruction is what we have listed as our top priority. I think it's been very close to our number-one priority, if not the number-one priority in the four years that I've been here. And of course, we say this every year, you can really go to any street in Rattone, and there's some level of work that needs to be done to that street. Even streets that we paved recently, there's maintenance required, such as crack sealing and seal coating, and so most of our streets, and it will continue to be this way, will have street improvements, you know, my recommendation to you, fairly high on the list. We've also listed dam safety improvements at Lake Malloya. Mr. Campbell could not attend the meeting tonight, but there are a number of safety items that we've identified in our preliminary engineering report. We're still working on a preliminary engineering report to submit to the state engineer's office, but those are some big-ticket items. So you see some relatively large dollars coming up in future years required for dam safety, and definitely, we would want to take the limited local funds that we have and leverage other type of funds for that level of work. We'll talk more about what's going on at Lake Malloya as we go. We've listed patrol car replacement for Rattone Police Department in our top five. We have asked for capital outlay for patrol car replacement, but we have replaced three of our vehicles with new vehicles this year through a loan and our law enforcement protection fund. So that's a four-year issue. We bought three cars with that, and we're really leveraged on our ability to use those grant funds for the next four years that way. In the next four years, we will need to continue vehicle replacement. You'll recall that we actually bought some used vehicles a few years back from another department. That actually has worked pretty well. That could be an option for us, save a little bit of savings over buying a new vehicle. So we'll continue talking to you about patrol cars, but capital outlay is one potential avenue for that need. We've talked to you in the past about the replacement of Public Works equipment. We actually were successful with that in the past legislative session. The legislature did fund $175,000 for Public Works replacement equipment. Representative Roche really leveraged the majority of that money, so that's, that's an item that is important to us. We talked about how Public Works functions. The equipment that we have, a lot of it is pretty well-used. So the plan is with that $175,000 to purchase a loader that we would use on a daily basis. We use it everything from cleanup of alleys to work at our transfer station or our recycling center, typically something that we would heavily use. And then in addition, Mayor Commission, something I think I've talked about with a lot of you, is a piece of equipment that we're evaluating right now that would allow us to recycle asphalt millings, and we received a big pile of asphalt millings from work on I-25 last year, probably close to 20,000 cubic yards. This machine would recycle those millings into a product that we use for pothole patching and utility trench patching. As we've gone along, it's been increasingly more difficult to buy cold mix material that has a limited shelf life, but with this piece of equipment, you can patch those trenches in the coldest, wettest day of the year. It's not limited by weather, so that's something that we're looking at as well for that funding. So we'll talk more about that, but I would say that we went a long way to meeting our Public Works equipment needs, and then so that item probably drops down. It doesn't go off of the list, but it probably goes down the list significantly. Then we talked about Rattone Main Street grade blocks project. That would be the end of our top five, and progress that we've had since then, we are currently in the final design phase and getting ready to bid construction on the first phase of that. And we did wind up phasing that project. You recall, we talked about the total project. We estimated it to be $1 million. We have a little over $400,000 to start the first phase. We're looking at a transportation alternative program application through DOT to fund the second phase of that, so staff is actively working on that application. We anticipate submittal of that to DOT within two to three months. They're still identifying the submission date, but we have a way to go on that, but that is a priority, so it probably remains fairly high on our list. And then after that, you can see everything else, and it's, it's all still there. So I'll stop there, Mayor, and answer any questions, or, you know, just remind the public, this is their opportunity to comment on the priorities.
Are there any questions, comments for Mr. Berry?
I have a question. Where can the public access a copy of this today? Is there a copy at City Hall, is there a copy on the website? Eric, do you have a copy?
We will have a hard copy here at City Hall. Somebody could come by and pick it up. If it's not on our website now, we'll make sure that it is on the website. We'll get the information there.
I believe it's still on there, but I think we'll post it again, seeking public input and splash with the deadlines. Notify the public.
And, you know, the public really has about six weeks to get, to talk about this, to get their comments in. Call your commissioner.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, yeah, I have one. You know, we did get that concern yesterday with the lodgers tax board on refurbishing the convention center and that, those types of renovations, so I guess I just want to remind us that that's already been stated.
Anyone else like to make a comment at this time? All righty, thank you. Mr. Berry? Item G, city manager's report. Berry, which one is he reaching for?
Short version. Mayor, I'll make a report on the progress on some of our special projects. We do have a contractor and engineer working at Lake Malloya Dam all week. They've been up there the last couple of days. They are drilling three borings into Lake Malloya Dam. They are close to and parallel to the service spillway, and the intent of that is to install instrumentation that will help us monitor the performance of the dam. The, the instruments are called pismeters, and what they do is they will give us information that we currently don't have about water levels, seepage through the dam, called the free attic surface, so we can monitor that free attic surface. It's a high-hazard dam, and we don't have that kind of instrumentation on that. The additional benefit to this work is we will sample this material as they're conducting the boring, and with laboratory analysis of the materials that are in the embankment and in the foundation, that will allow us to do future work such as a seepage analysis and a slope stability analysis. So we would plan on that work down the road. We'll have the material ready to do that analysis, and it's something that will be required by state engineer as we go along. And of course, we're going to ask the state engineer to participate in the cost of those analysis, but that's going on right now. The contractor is near the top of the dam. They're boring at the tallest part of the dam, the maximum section, and they bore through the embankment to the foundation. So that'll be going on all week, and then we'll have data that currently we don't have, so wanted to report to you on that. We have completed the chip-seal pavement surfacing project for this year. We've talked about that previously. We chip-sealed portions of Galistao Avenue, Apache Avenue, South Fourth Street, and South Third Street. That work was done by a contractor, FNF, with a lot of help from our city of Rattone Public Works crew. Our Public Works crew added things like sweeping of the streets, traffic control, and we provided the loading of aggregate at our aggregate piles, so another place that we use the loader. I think FNF did a great job. If you recall, we paid for this with two co-op grants that were due to expire at the end of the year. Rattone Public Schools had a co-op grant that was expiring at the end of the year for a smaller amount. They added that to this project, and so part of this was in the area of the intermediate school, and the sections of the streets that we resurfaced were really distressed. So happy with the work. I would caution people out there that there's a process to chip-seal. So initially, we see a lot of loose gravel for people maybe riding a motorcycle or a bicycle. It's not like pavement. It's a loose surface. We will let the traffic run on that for a little while, and then we'll start picking up the loose aggregate with our sweeper. That's a process that'll take a while, so the loose aggregate will be present for weeks. So would issue caution to people. And then as well, it's just a tender surface, so if people drive slowly, really use some caution on this surface, we'll have a better end product. But if you look at streets that we chip-sealed last year, you kind of see where we're going with the chip-seal surfacing, and it's a, it's a good treatment for these type of streets. So report to you that that is accomplished. We will go into the closeout phase of these grants next. While we're talking about our Public Works crew, they have returned to the landfill today. They're completing the placement of seed and mulch because we anticipate that there's some rain coming out there, and there's no guarantees on the rain, but it looks like we might have a monsoon season, and we want to have that, that reclamation work done, so they're working hard to get that in. We could see some later this week, so we could have a short time to get all of that work done, so that's taken a priority right now. Mayor and commissioners, in the future coming up, I want to talk about some bid openings that we have, where we're requesting bids from contractors currently. We've got the Airport Taxway Alpha Phase 2 project. We're going to open bids on that on July 12, and then we would anticipate commencing the work shortly thereafter. Hospital Drive Reconstruction, a project we've talked about, we're going to open bids on July 19. And then Hart Avenue Brilliant Street, a portion of those two, we will be replacing a steel water line in those. We'll open bids July 26 on that work. One last thing, Mayor and Commission, to just report on an entrance conference that was held by our independent auditor that was held on June 27, 2018. A couple of personnel from the firm, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, were present, stayed for that week doing fieldwork. They will be back in Rattone to continue that fieldwork on August 20, or the week of August 20, and then the week of October 29, and we are looking at a submittal date of December 15 for that audit work. So some work to do in that period. Staff was present at that from the city and from both utilities, and also board members. Mayor Sagata represented the commission at that entrance conference. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. Any questions, comments for Mr. Berry?
Good job.
I got one question. When we finally get to Hospital Drive, what's the alternate route going to be?
Yeah, what it's looking like is we will have one lane of traffic open. That will be for people going towards the hospital, because when you want to access the hospital, you really don't want to be, deal with a detour. But we'll build half of the street, and the other half will accommodate traffic, and when we get that half built, we'll flip-flop that, so there'll be one way in. Because we're building half the street, it'll take a little longer. So there's going to be some frustration with that, but on your way out of the hospital, there will be a detour, and we'll use turf drive and La Mesa Drive for those detours.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All righty, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.